Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Governing Board work session. Let the record show all five members are present and the time is 7:27. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Pass is 5-0. So our topic for this work session is the USAA land exchange agreement slash resolution. Mr. McGlorino, I will hand the floor over to you.
Thank you, President Frank, members of the board, Dr. Finch. So we have some information to share with you regarding the possibility of exchanging some land. So there would be a formal document involved with this that the board would need to consider. But there are some provisions that we want to make you aware of and in this format have an opportunity to at least have some dialogue to make sure that we're including the wishes of the board in what we're proposing. I'm gonna prepare or share some information with you that I won't bet my life on in terms of the information. I was able to kind of cobble this together just from my recollection from many years ago to what I was able to find on the Internet. And so, just a word of caution.
Well, if it's on the Internet, it must be true.
Yeah. That's what, that's, I just wanted to make sure I had that disclaimer. So, USAA purchased a section of land which is a large area, 640 acres, that generally is bounded by I-17 on the west, 19th Avenue on the east, Happy Valley on the south, and Joe Max Road to the north. And they were going to create a regional corporate center in that section of land. And in 2004, they actually opened up their Phoenix campus and then it was expanded again in 2015. But during that expansion, they determined that that's as big as they want that campus to be. At one point in time, they were thinking about consolidating campuses, but that is no longer in their plan. But yet, they own all that land. So in the spring of 2015, we were made aware that they wanted to seek a rezoning application with the city of Phoenix to develop the balance of the land that wasn't part of their campus or already developed. There was also some commercial aspects of what they've built initially. We had some objections to the rezoning application. Actually, initially, there wasn't a school site at all that was being considered and there were 1,200 single-family homes and somewhere in the neighborhood of another 800 multifamily homes that were part of their initial design with no school planned within the development. We were able to intervene in the rezoning application process and as a result of that, we were able to have a designated school site included in their development. But it came with a stipulation. And this stipulation, I think, is an important part of this. It's not a stipulation that we actually wanted, but it is something that USAA advocated for and ultimately got approved. But essentially, it starts a clock based on when a preliminary plat is approved, which is part of the development process, that gives us what I would refer to as the, an opportunity to have a school within this development. But that clock is already ticking. That clock started in July of 2017 and it's got an 18-month duration to it. Also included in the stipulation is that the developer can work out an arrangement with us or with any other provider to be able to provide education opportunities for the students that would be generated from this development. So, again, the stipulation wasn't our, we did not author it. We actually objected to it or voiced our objection to it, but ultimately, it was approved by the city. And so that is the only standing that we have with this development is that there's the potential for us to have a school site. Absent of that, we would have also maybe considered a voluntary assistance fee to be able to offset some of the impact and do some things of that nature. But I think it was kind of important, what was, at least, I found that there was a sense of awareness that we were dealing with the USAA corporate individuals from San Antonio. And I think they had a different understanding of their, of the partnership that they could create for having a school within their development than we are accustomed to, at least here in the state of Arizona, or at least, I'll speak specifically for Deer Valley School District. So, we got off to a little bit of a rocky start, I will admit. And thankfully, they decided to hire a local developer, Sunbelt Holdings, and our interactions have been much more positive since those initial interactions where they didn't even have a school planned at all in their development. So that background, I think, is important because it, we might have started off, I wish we could have started off on a different foot. And I don't think it was a lack of willingness on our part, and I'm not blaming anybody. It just, it's kind of an important component to this. So just briefly, what is the Union Park development? So it's 400-acre mixed-use, mostly residential, but it has some commercial development or mixed-use areas that'll be commercial with some residential multifamily stuff mixed in with it. And as I mentioned, 1,200 single-family homes, 800 multifamily units. And the first phase is underway. If you've been by the project, they have much of the, within the first phase, they have much of the development started and they are building, which is fairly obvious just due to the height, but they're starting on the recreation center pool and some of the amenities. So it's a rather large building. So they're building that so that they can actually build some, somewhat of a buzz about the development, a draw, if you will. Provided a map of the actual development. The school site is just east of their campus, or the last expansion of their campus. It is about 12 acres. About 11 of it is usable. There's an acre of retention. There's some street drainage that comes with this. It's not unusual for us to, I'll just say, participate in things like street drainage and other issues related to sites that serve more than one purpose because they're, because they can, I'll say. But the first phase is what you see that is representing the parcels that are platted on this particular map. So our demographer, the projections from our demographer actually include about 1,125 students in an area that's highlighted by the orange sections, which is, that's a heat map, so that would be east of I-17, south of Dove Valley Road, and north of Happy Valley. Those are just grade school students in 1,125. And 600 of those would be just in the Nortera Canyon attendance area and all the way down to south of Happy Valley. Nortera Canyon boundary stops at Joe Max Road, but it actually, the 600 students that I'm indicating would include the development that we're speaking of, the Union Park at Nortera Development. And I think one of the things that's interesting to note here is that we're also seeing a lot of other rezoning applications that the city is considering. Just recently, Honor Health was approved for, I think, 1,500 multifamily homes by their campus right off of Dove Valley. And so there are other rezoning applications that are being considered. So much of what this area that you see highlighted by that orange color was zoned as commercial initially. And so we really have two schools sites in this vicinity. One is the Sonoran Foothills School that we built a couple of years ago, and the other is the Nortera Canyon School that we built back in 2007. But we have no other school, elementary school sites in the, in this particular region, which makes those 1,125 additional students even that much more difficult for us to accommodate. And again, that's a projection, but it is a projection, a short-term projection over the next five years. I didn't know if your hand was raised or are you just prone in that area?
Carry on. No, I was not raising my hand to ask a question. Sorry.
So, I identified the schools that are near this growth area or that have kind of a connection to this in terms of attendance boundary, from an attendance boundary standpoint. And so you can see the actual numbers of the students at those schools from 2012-13 through 2017-18, where the shading is, that's the projected, from 18-19 all the way out to the year 27-28. And the schools, just to identify, are Desert Mountain, Esperanza, Nortera Canyon, Sonoran Foothills, and I've included Sunset Ridge because I think it can be, that school is in close enough proximity to offer some type of, to be part of some type of solution. But you can also see that in 2018-19, Nortera Canyon will be over the school facilities board capacity in 2019-20, and it, in just its fifth year of operations, Sonoran Foothills will be above its projection.
Question. So, I'm just curious, why Desert Sage and Stetson Hills aren't included in this list? Because Desert Sage actually mileage, according to Google Maps, is closer. It's only about three and a half miles from USAA compared to Esperanza, that I think is about maybe five to seven miles. And Stetson Hills was also about three and a half miles. And I think Desert Sage, they started a Mandarin program there to help boost the enrollment. So I don't think that school is bursting at the seams. It's in an older, more advanced neighborhood.
Great question. These are the schools that have a portion of their boundary that is, that touches the area that I identified with 1,125 students. So Desert Mountain does dip down below Carefree Highway in their attendance boundary. Esperanza is the identified school of boundary for the, what is, will be developed as the Union Park development. Both Desert Sage and Stetson Hills are growing their student populations. Stetson Hills does not have growth in the, does not have space in the foreseeable future, but we could have provided that information for those schools as well if you'd like to see it.
I would like to see it.
It's included in the, it's included in the demographer's report, but we can include that as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other schools that we should be including?
Are there other schools reasonably close? And then also, with the projections out, because, you know, what does Stetson look like? And, you know, if we go out this far, because the neighborhood might get older and decline again.
Born whether to try and grab this on the fly and hope for the best. Always afraid something, I'm gonna have a technological problem. I won't be able to display it, but the file is very big when I go to download it.
You could provide it to us later.
It actually opened, so Stetson Hills is over its capacity currently and remains over its capacity through the entire projection. It's, school facilities board capacity is 972. They have about 1,070 students. And what year is that? That was 16-17, sorry. 1,045 students this year, 1,022 students. They dip down to a low of 988, but then they shoot back up to 1,069 at the end of that period. For Desert Sage, they have a SFB capacity of 938, of which they have 672 students projected for next year, growing to a high of 710. So there is some space at Desert Sage. Just caution that Desert Sage has interior hallways because it's all under one roof, and the school facilities board capacity is determined by the total square footage. So it's a little bit misleading. I don't think when we have interior hallways, the SFB capacity is usually overstated. When we have, when we don't have exterior hallways, then it's typically understated. But, but there is some space at Desert Sage based on the information, if we're making the similar comparison to what we see here. But we will certainly-
Thank you for that information.
You bet. And as I mentioned, just a note at the bottom, Union Park is designated for the Esperanza attendance boundary. So you can see where the demographer is adding students. That's typically gonna be all Union Park because their enrollment has been relatively flat in prior years. Hopefully that makes sense. So, so one of the things that we originally offered to USAA and they did not, that they weren't interested in, is we have a site, ironically, that's close to Desert Sage, at 43rd Avenue in Alameda. It's actually two parcels. Combined, it would be 14 acres. And I don't know how we acquired those 14 acres, but we've had them the entire duration that I've been employed here. And we have no identified need for those 14 acres. It is adjacent to a church and some residential development, kind of sandwiched between the church and some residential developments. And we extended an offer to USAA because, again, coming from Texas, they weren't aware of having to cooperate with schools on school development. We extended an offer to them early on, said, "Would you guys be interested in a land exchange?" And not that they want the parcel, but we get, I get a call at least once or twice a year, somebody asking to buy the 43rd Avenue in Alameda site. In order for us to sell the site, to outright sell it, we would have to get a vote of all of our constituents. That's required in statute to be able to sell it. And most people don't want to go through the burden of waiting to find out what the vote of the people is going to say to be able to hang around long enough to develop a parcel and try and make it profitable. So, but the statute does allow for us to exchange land. So originally, USAA said, "Hey, why don't you just buy the school site from us?" And they made us a very generous offer of $100,000 an acre or $1.2 million to buy the land. And we don't really have a provision in the bond for buying land. We did, and remember, we're bound by the pamphlet. We have school sites, so we didn't think that we were going to have to buy land. But we do have a designated category within the 2,000 bond authorization for a, for a new school if the board elects to approve that. So we offered the, offered the land exchange. It was rebuffed by USAA initially, but once Sunbelt Holdings got involved, they decided that this is something worth pursuing.
How did Sunbelt get involved?
USAA hired them.
And our relationship with Sunbelt is what historically?
It's been good. I mean, they actually were the developer in Sonoran Foothills. So we had a 50-50 exchange with that. Fifty percent of the land was donated, 50% of the land was purchased for the Sonoran Foothill site. And they've done other projects throughout the valley that they have participated with schools. So they understand very well.
They're not, they're not relatives of anyone or employees?
Well, I believe they all have relatives. I don't know where they're-
I mean, of one of ours. Or, or one of ours is an employee of.
Not that I'm aware of.
So no conflict of interest that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
I believe that's the point you were-
That's the point I'm getting to, yeah. Is there a conflict of interest or a potential conflict of interest? Because it's surprising to me that a large corporation like USAA would suddenly somehow link with a company that, it just seemed odd. It's just the way, the way you've described it, it seems odd.
I think that when they brought them on, might have been an interesting dynamic. They originally were, they, when they originally brought the concept to us, and remember, they didn't necessarily bring it to us. We found out that they were doing something, that they were moving forward, and so we intervened after, you know, finding out, kind of through media sources, quite frankly, that this was ongoing. They originally had a developer that has worked on a lot of projects in Florida, and I think they realized, hey, they needed somebody more local. And Sunbelt Holdings happens to be a large firm. And so, the timing of when they brought them on, I don't think is as interesting, or might be the interesting part, the fact that they're working with a developer. What's unique about this is USAA is developing this parcel as a, as an investment. So they are trying to get a return on their advance, investment from the initial purchase of the land.
And for clarification, that USAA picked Sunbelt Holding. Deer Valley Unified School District had nothing to do with that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Just to make sure I understand this correctly, USAA wanted us to pay them to buy land so we could build a school that they can promote in their brochures so they can make money selling houses. Have I got that right?
That, that is exactly how they perceived it.
Well, that would be how I perceive it too. All right, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Mrs. Ordway, do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Ms. O'Brien, anything? Just want to make sure everyone, no one's missed, and Ms. Fisher, comments?
Like I said, I, I'll do research, because I'm just concerned that Sunbelt, the way it all of a sudden came in, and the name just sounds really familiar, like I've heard it before, that somebody worked for them or something. So I'll look into it and I'll bring it forward when I find that information clearly.
Okay.
The only, the only connection that we have is, that I know of, is John Keegan is one of the primary members of Sunbelt Holdings. That name may sound familiar to you. He was once married to Lisa Graham Keegan. So, but I guess the good news is, I think he understands the value of schools. They also, Sunbelt Holdings did, it's not in our district, but they, also the developers of Estancia, and there are two elementary school sites in that community. So, and like I said, the Sonoran Foothills project, they were very aware that a school site helps sell homes. So Sunbelt Holdings gets it. USAA, they don't do this, quite frankly. No offense to them, but they, this is the first time they're trying to convert some land into-
Right, and that would be my concern, because it wouldn't be USAA that would profit. It would be someone who's a realtor or somebody who's selling those properties or making a deal. We want to make sure that it's not something of that nature. That's all I was-
Sure. And USAA is trying to get a return on their, but they've already bought the land, right? So now they have to try and do something to sell the land back to somebody. The house is kind of a secondary thought on their mind. If somebody just gave them the money for the land, they would walk away from it, I think. Well, actually, I don't think so. The reason they bought the whole section of land, they tell me, is their San Antonio campus is surrounded by things that they don't think are the fit with, with what they stand for. And so they wanted enough land to make sure that they could control the surroundings of the Phoenix campus. So that's why they bought such a big parcel in the first place.
Okay. If you, go ahead and continue.
Okay. So, we offered a land exchange because they weren't familiar with cooperating with school districts to build a school. They originally thought that their, that wasn't something that they were willing to entertain. When USAA did hire Sunbelt Holdings, they had some conversations with them and said, "Hey, that's not actually a bad deal because they've had an offer on the Alameda site since," because this has been going on since 2015. And it's predicated on that site being rezoned. We are not subject to zoning, so it would need to be rezoned to residential. But they are willing to entertain that. And in the meantime, they are moving forward with all the development that they need to be able to put in the infrastructure. So one of the things that they've agreed to do is include all the adjacent street improvements that would be on the two undeveloped sides or, of the parcel. So that the land that's not developed would have all the curb and gutter and sidewalks on our side of the street, which, that is not typical, by the way. So there's a pretty significant investment that they're willing to, to share or include in the deal, if you will. The land exchange requires, the statute requires that there are some things that have to take place. There has to be certified appraisal, there has to be an ALTA survey, some archaeological studies. And we have included in the agreement that all of those costs will be borne by USAA because we feel like that they would be enriched by going through the rezoning process. We could just do a straight land exchange with them, our land for their land, without it being rezoned. But the land is much more profitable if it can be rezoned residential. And so they want to make sure that it can be rezoned before they're willing to exchange for the land. So it's kind of an important component. I also, I failed to mention this, but USAA has had the agreement for almost two weeks. They were supposed to meet with Sunbelt Holdings today, but we did not hear back from them. So I don't know for a fact that we have all the comments. So I don't have the agreement in its final form to be able to share with you tonight. I'm sharing with you conceptually what's in the agreement. I don't, without any feedback from USAA at this point.
Perhaps they were at the Capitol today with Red for Ed.
I, they-
And that's why we didn't-
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure, remember, USAA is in San Antonio, so they, maybe there's a movement in Texas too. Could have been.
Anything could happen.
The, as I mentioned earlier, USAA is gonna construct all the streets. They're doing that for some selfish reasons as well. Like I said, the drainage needs to get onto the parcel that would be a school site. And then we would assist in getting the Alameda site rezoned for residential development. We don't necessarily, but what that really means is that we wouldn't be a hindrance to it being rezoned because part of the rezoning process is they have to ask us if we have capacity to be able to accommodate what students might be generated from the development that's going on. So essentially, we'd be telling them, as I mentioned, Desert Sage has some capacity, that they would be able to attend either La Spriesis or Desert Sage. It does obligate us to design and build an elementary school on that parcel. I mean, one of the things, remember, their initial thought is, we would buy the land to be able to build a school that would help them sell homes. Now, if they want to trade us for some land, they want some sort of commitment that we're gonna build a school and, you know, at what milestones. So what we've included is that at the 100th home closing, so that means the house not only has been built, but it's been closed, so somebody's bought it, that we would be designing the school. And by the 200th home closing, we would need to have started the construction, not have it completed, but at least start the construction by the 200th home closing. At that point in time, they're gonna be well underway in terms of their development. Again, the first phase is 309 single-family homes. And I failed to mention, or I just want to reiterate the point, that the 2,000 bond authorization does have a new school within what we identified to the voters that we would be building. We never, we weren't sure at the time as to what school this would be, but it would be, if we entered into this agreement the way it's written today, we would be authorizing the 2,000 bond authorization to build this school, as opposed to another school, or repurposing the money, which would also be an option. One of the provisions that they have is that they want, in the interim, between now and when the school would be actually open, they want the students to attend a school other than Esperanza. So we have identified Sunset Ridge as an option for them, and they want us to ensure that we would transport the students to Sunset Ridge. The other two schools that they would pass on their way to Sunset Ridge, unfortunately, we just don't think that we have the capacity to be able to take them with the other growth that's happening in those, in those areas, as I mentioned earlier. So that's kind of the, oh, I guess I should have forwarded the slide for the audience. I apologize. So that's, that's kind of- So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, you know, what's contained within the agreement. And I have a couple slides that just have some pros and cons of, you know, if we do the land exchange or if we don't. These are just my thoughts, there may be some additional thoughts that the board cares to share, and then we'll kind of open it up for some dialogue. So, in the event that the land exchange is exercised, it does provide a useful school site in an area where we're expecting some growth, in which we have, which we would be trading for a parcel that, that right now, we have no intended use for. It does address a need in our high-growth area. We have limited options, again, because most of that was zoned as commercial, and as it's being rezoned residential, we're finding we don't have enough school capacity east of I-17, between, I'll say Carefree Highway and Happy Valley Road. And it does create an opportunity to increase enrollment and/or draw students from some of those other areas, if we wanted to put a specialized program at the school. The, at full buildout, I would expect that the school, or the development could generate maybe 500 students on its own, elementary-age students. But that's not necessarily the economy of scale that we'd be targeting for when we would construct the school. But with 1,125 students in the area, we would want to maybe consider a magnet to draw some of those students to take some of the burden off of both Norterra Canyon and or Sonoran Foothills. So, it provides an opportunity for that. On the con side of this, it does require additional MNO dollars to operate an additional school. I would hazard a guess that that's somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 to $700,000 on an annualized basis for the utility costs, the additional principal, additional custodial staff at another campus, all those things, et cetera, et cetera. It does obligate us to, the agreement as it's written today, does obligate us to spend those 2013 bond authorizations for this particular school. And it would create some interim transportation costs to transport the students to Sunset Ridge, or to a school other than Esperanza, is what they've actually asked for. I'll pause here, see if there's some questions before I move to the-
So, I know that you mentioned there was also growth over in the West Wing area. So, if we were to build this school, where we already have a cluster of schools, even though some of them have more enrollment and others have less enrollment, then what do we do about the area to the west, where we're also expecting to see growth?
That's a great question. So, along the Happy Valley corridor, we're going to expect to see some additional growth, both on the east and the west side. This particular parcel, or this particular development is on the east side of that. On the west side of Happy Valley, all the way up to Joe Max, Alaravita has started, which is a development that's going to be actually more homes, more single-family homes than Union Park. They are a little behind, maybe a couple months behind, the Union Park in terms of development. But two months is something that can be made up rather quickly in terms of, you know, which project becomes either easier to develop or more desirable, you know, when they get closer to market. And so, the short term is, there are several options around that particular school site that we can consider for an interim solution. But eventually, we may need to consider an additional school on the west side of the Happy Valley corridor as well. We do have a school site currently, it's a state land parcel near 55th Avenue and Pinnacle Vista, which is north of Happy Valley Road in the Stetson Valley neighborhood. And that could be potentially a school that would help with some of the growth that's happening on the west side. We think that the timing of that's going to be maybe as much as a year behind the Union Park, based on the information that's been shared with us from the developer.
Is there, I know you have a question, is there bond money for two schools?
President Frank, no, there, we, in the 2013 bond authorization, it's just one.
Okay.
There is one elementary school, it's $16 million. And there is a $2 million line item for student growth, to accommodate student growth. And that, the intention of that was to be able to make sure that we had some dollars available to deal with specifically maybe some high school capacity issues, to avoid having to consider, you know, building a new high school.
Okay, Mrs. Fisher.
It sounds to me like you're allowing, or we're allowing, or you're asking us to approve for Sunbelt Realty, along with USAA, to dictate that we are going to bus kids way outside of our appropriate boundaries, and we are going to build a school exclusively for them at our expense. Is that a reasonable summing it up? That's what that sounds like to me, and it actually sounds quite insulting that we would even be asked that. We just redid Esperanza. I mean, are we, are we now going to-
And Desert Sage is closer.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is this follows an illogic arrogance, perhaps, but-
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, they, the school would not be exclusive to them, and they understand that, in fact, they-
What guarantee do we have for that, though? I mean, we're allowing them to dictate where we're going to bus the kids.
It's not in the agreement, in terms of the attendance boundary for the school. It's not a part of the agreement, in terms of what the attendance boundary of the school would be.
Then, why wouldn't we bus them to Esperanza, which is about five miles compared to Sunset Ridge, which is about seven miles-
They specifically requested-
Then they are dictating.
Well, I wasn't speaking to that component of it. They did dictate that they wanted a school other than Esperanza for the interim until the school was to be built.
Why?
Actually, at the time, the Esperanza school was a C-rated school, and I don't think that they thought that was going to be fit, would be fitting for the homeowners that they were trying to target for this development.
Okay, I want to make sure, Mrs. Ordway and Mrs. O'Brien, if they have thoughts they want to weigh in. And Mrs. Fisher, if you had further, I didn't know if you did, okay. Okay, Mrs. Ordway, did you have something you wanted to question, or? Okay, it just, and forgive me, for those of you who are at the end, I'm like craning my neck to make sure I can see.
I just, I was waiting for Dr. Finch to weigh in, and then maybe Dr. Galligan, if she was planning on it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone, no one felt like they weren't being given an opportunity.
I told you I was a little slow tonight.
That's okay. Mrs. O'Brien, did you have questions, or did you? Okay, okay, thank you, so-
Would you like to finish the presentation, President?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. McGlorino.
Just one more slide. So, the pros and cons if the land exchange is not executed, right? And just tried to be unbiased here, I definitely hear the feedback from the board. But we can avoid the additional MNO cost of an additional school if we don't execute this. But it will mean that we'll have to try and find where those 1,125 students are going to go. So, I don't mean to imply that it would be more expensive to have them go to existing campuses. Obviously, if we add another school, there will be more MNO costs. It does, if we don't execute this, it frees us up to make other decisions with that $16 million, whether or not it's another school, maybe on the west side, as I mentioned before, or it can be repurposed. So, the statute does allow for up to 10% of the authorization to be used for any other capital purpose. I think it even says legal capital purpose, so just, if you're testing my recollection of statute. On the con side, though, it does provide an opportunity for the developer to work with a competitive option, right? So, this could be a charter school, so it's been plotted as a school site now. And they have not shared with me, but Sunbelt Holdings, the developer has not shared with me, but USAA, when we were negotiating with them directly, early on, did share with me that they had a strong interest to maybe work with a charter school or some other entity other than Deer Valley. During that negotiation, we were able to get in a better position with the stipulation on the rezoning, but we're still, there's still no guarantees in terms of that. And so, there could be an opportunity loss in terms of students if it's not a Deer Valley school that ends up in their community. But they would have to work that out with somebody else, and I have no idea if they're even entertaining that option. I know USAA had an interest in that, at least initially. And then, the cons are, there is no other plan to address that regional student growth in terms of how we would address that. And one of the things that we argued during the rezoning application was that even if the, USAA does entertain a competitive option, let's say it's a private school, if there's students that move into that neighborhood that don't attend the charter school or private school, or the alternative, I'll call it, then we're obligated. As a public school district, we're obligated to those students. So, I kind of made the analogy at one point in time to the city staff that it's kind of like saying, people are going to buy bottled water, so I don't need to provide water for this new development, because they're going to buy bottled water. Well, what happens when they turn the tap on? They expect water, right? So, I was trying to make an analogy to something that they had a responsibility for. But anyhow, so there are pros and cons of this decision. And the only thing that's, you know, a sense of urgency is, again, the stipulation that we have 18 months. So, that doesn't mean that we have to act right away, but there may be a reason to want to at least make a decision, one way or the other, so that we know what we're doing moving forward. So, that's all I have to share.
I just have one more question. So, Ms. Fisher was asking if any employees had a relationship with Sunbelt, or? Yeah, I was just curious if any board members did. I mean, I don't, do you?
I have a feeling that my fellow board members might be confused, because I carry my real estate license with Sunbelt Realty, which is not in any way affiliated with Sunbelt Holdings. So, I'm so happy that you just asked, and I'm happy to clear that up, but the two have absolutely nothing to do with each other. And I promise you that I would be the first to file a conflict of interest if there was such an association. Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. O'Brien.
And I just want to point out, that could be where I've heard it, but I don't know. I just think the whole conversation is really odd that they, that everything suddenly changed. And I just, it's one of those situations where the hair on the back of your neck stands up. We're not making a decision tonight anyways, so I'll just research whatever information you have. And I don't, and I'm not comfortable with just making decisions off of presentations. We have to have an agreement. And I definitely still do not like the idea that they are going to dictate that we're going to bus kids to certain schools when we have them, because you're correct. If they turn on that tap, they expect to see water. Well, when that occurs, we're going to bus them to Esperanza, because that's the school that they would go to. And unless we're above capacity, you know, I, not just us as a board, but us as a full, you know, an organization, we owe an explanation to our taxpayers when we say we're going to build a school. And I think if they feel that, okay, we're bursting at the seams, we need to build a school, they would support us. But I don't see that in the numbers. So, no, Ms. O'Brien, this is not an attack against you. Something is amiss, and I could be completely wrong. I just want to research, but I think we need some more ironclad data. Nothing against you, Jim, I get that they're, Mr. McGlorino, I get that they're dragging their feet, but we have to have real information from them.
And I certainly appreciate that as well. We've been working on this for three years now. And just to even get invited to the conversation initially, right? And so, we're trying to propose something that we think is, at least gives us an opportunity, because, quite frankly, they had the opportunity to not have us participate at all. Only, it was only from some pressure that we put on them, and I'm using that term loosely, to even get in this position. And that's not, that's not germane to the decision that the board needs to make. We just don't have the current capacity to be able to accept the number of students that are going to be generated by this development without making some other changes, and-
So, do you think they're dragging their feet intentionally to wait out the 18 months? Or what's the, I mean, I don't understand the purpose.
I think, yeah, I-
We have to have something.
I think the problem is that USAA is not a developer. And so, they have become surprised about all of the decisions that actually, and that have monetary consequences to them, because they've never done this before. So, it's actually the investment arm of USAA that's trying to show that this is a profitable decision for the company. And-
So, it's with the accounts.
So, it's a, it's a numbers, it's a bottom-line thing for them. And so, they're trying to make sure that they make the right decisions to get the highest return on their investment for, I think, their shareholders. I don't know how they're organized, but the, and the same projections that we use for Sonoran Foothills has that school overcapacity within five years. So, we're using the same methodology. So, I think that if you look at the numbers, I don't know that we're going to have exactly 1,125 students in five years, but we're going to have more students than I know we have capacity for. So, somehow, that's going to have to get addressed. And this is one option, and there could be others as well.
So, I'd like to thank you for your presentation, for your listing of the pros and cons, and for the font that I can read. And this is just philosophical on my part. It's not a criticism of you in any way. I appreciate all the hard work you've put in to get us this far on this. But I, philosophically, I really have a problem with the concept that we would have a school that's not good enough for some students, and other students, it's okay for them to have this. So, it's okay for a certain demographic to be at Esperanza, but it's not okay for a different demographic. And I think what I value about Deer Valley, what I've seen with all the schools that I've been in, is the equity. I don't feel that we have inequitable resources or schools within our district. I think all students have the same opportunities. And, you know, I go to schools countywide, I don't see that in all the schools I visit. I see some schools that look like country clubs in some districts, and other districts that look like, you know, they're getting ready for the penitentiary. So, just philosophically, I am not comfortable with entertaining the notion that we need something special for this group, because what we have here just isn't good enough for them. But it's good enough for these kids, I have a problem with that, so, this is my thoughts.
And President Frank, just for clarification, remember, this goes back three years ago, so, prior to some of the, and honestly, I don't think the USAA people actually, I don't know, maybe they went by Esperanza, I have no idea. I think they just felt that it wasn't, again, and these are more accountant types that are saying, hey, I think we want to make sure that there's a school to help sell homes in the neighborhood, right? I think, I don't know that it was as much of a statement or passing judgment on Esperanza as it was, they felt it would be more profitable for them to have a school in there.
Well, if they think it's okay to bus elementary kids two miles, two or three miles further to get away from Esperanza, then, I don't know.
Yeah.
I can only say how it looks to me. Ms. Tweedy.
I was actually going to just bring up, too, when I'm looking at the enrollment at all these schools, Desert Mountain, Sunset Ridge, Esperanza, and Desert Sage are all well below capacity. I mean, we need to rearrange, we may have to rearrange the boundaries. I know, like, Sunset Ridge could go to Desert Mountain to make room. But it's not sustainable to keep building schools, because eventually, these neighborhoods age out, and then we're under-enrolled again. And we don't have an increasing number of students in our district to justify that. We may have to move where students are at, but we can't keep just building schools, and then 10 years later, we're running an empty school.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Thank you. Dr. Finch or Mr. McGlorino, based on the proposed school site in Union Park, and then where that is located, actually, in our overall district of Deer Valley, what might be the ramifications of having a charter school at that location?
President Frank, Ms. O'Brien, I would suspect that we would see a decline, a further decline of students that would attend that school. Meaning that, just as we would try and get to an economy of scale to make a school cost-effective to operate, so would somebody else trying to operate that school. And so, they would mark it to the point where they would actually fill the school, however big it might be. I mean, that might be something that would be different than what we- I mean, that might be something that would be different than what we would build because it could be a different configuration. But the, the idea isn't to, to have the fewest number of students in the school, it's to have a school that has the right number of students in it so that it's cost-effective to actually, and, and it's an effective learning environment for the students, obviously.
I may chime in here.
Go ahead.
It's probably a good time now. There's gonna be a school there, ready or not. It's coming and it's either gonna be us or someone else. So, I know we're concerned about the MNO and, and running it and those, those kind of things. We are the fastest-growing county in the nation and we're the fifth fastest-growing in nation, fifth, fifth, fifth fastest-growing in the nation for states. And I think Mr. M. mentioned at the very beginning, they are, they're, they're making new land and so, what's happening is they're changing commercial into residential and actually against our wishes. And we get these phone calls all the time, they're doing a lot of fill-in as well, the 14 acre is a good example. And they're not asking us, they're just doing it. We're finding out it, about it later. Honor Health is a good example. So, we can experience or will continue to experience growth. So, there's a school going in there, ready or not, soon. If it's not us, it'll be somebody else. What, I remember I, Ms. Fisher and I were at a conference about, hmm, eight months ago, that's when I first got here, and we listened to a guy named, and I've shared with you, now he's a doctor, he finished his, his PhD at Yale. He's from AmeriCup County and he was talking about all this data that showed two principles, and I've shared this with you before. One is that parents want their kid to go to a school that they can fit in, basically was his first point, and, and excel in their environment. The second point he made was that the parents will often choose convenience over excellence. And if you look at, if you look at the history of our charter neighbors, that is very, that's, that's happening to us. We may be the most chartered, if that's a word, district in the whole state. We are surrounded by charters and, and that's the point that Matt was trying to make today, or the 26th. Scott, I, and Monica met with him and he said, "Your data matches everyone else's data." That if you, in what he was showing us about on this neat map, we have to have the software to run it, so we have to work on that. Scott's working on that to actually give you the presentation so you can see it yourself. But his point was that you're, you're going to get a, a school there and you, you're going to get more student growth that the demographer is, is not projecting. He's saying, he's saying that you need to take the demographer's report with his findings and meld them together because the demographer's kinda looking at straight numbers. I'm looking at choices, parent choices, what's behind the numbers. I thought it was very interesting because it blew my mind because I'm not used to that concept. And this kid's a, a PhD kid that's just focusing on what, what the parents do and why they do it. So, I thought, I found that was very interesting that he found out our numbers were exactly the same. I, I think Mr. M. is on the right trail as well. I think, I think they Google it on why we shouldn't go to Esperanza. I don't think they've ever been there. And if the board is stuck on that piece, I, we can maybe negotiate that out and say, we're, we're gonna send them to Esperanza. And I think we gave them a tour and showed them and they just, I'm sure they just Googled it and said on schools.com, "This is a C." Well, we don't want our kids going there. Well, that was three years ago. It's not a C. So, I think if we gave them a tour, they'd be like, "Whoa, this school is awesome, it's brand new." And it is sharp. And so, the bean counters that are pushing the numbers probably have never been there. And again, it's all about profit, but this is America. That's what happens. And they, a company decides to buy land and they need, they need to maximize their profit. That's how Anthem was built. So, I'm just thinking that, I just don't want to be, make a decision that we're gonna regret for the next 20 years, but I also want us to be wise and use our doll, our dollars wisely. But we have, like Ms. Frank mentioned, we have another issue on the other side and we can wait and not build schools here. At both of those locations, but I think we're gonna regret that. I really do. Yes, our, our schools do age out over time, but they also reseed over time because what happens is grandpa and grandma move along and they sell it to that new young family that's coming in with, now they have kids. And so, that's gonna happen over time as we redevelop our, our neighborhoods over time. So, those schools will be back in business in time. And, and again, since we're growing, the demographer is, is making projections and I think Ms. Fisher even noticed it, that they were off 10 years ago when she looked at it. Yeah, that's why it's called a demographer. That's an educated guess. And there's a lot of variables that are in play now that weren't in play 10 years ago. So, I, I just think we need to seriously look at it and I don't want to make a decision where we have a basis in our front yard, you know, gaining 300 kids that are new to the neighborhood, maybe new to USA, executives, et cetera, and then stealing 5 to 800 from us. That's gonna be a problem. That, that's how we pay the bills with kids, so, and I just, I'm just worried that we would make a decision that we're gonna regret.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Mr. McGlorino, the Honor Health rezoning that has occurred recently, can you say, I know you said the numbers earlier, but about how many residents will be in that area?
It's my understanding, again, we didn't get to participate at the, what I would say the appropriate level there, but I, it's my understanding, it's 1,500 multifamily homes. But we were never able to get a clear definition of what they intend to build with that. Is it gonna be age-restricted? You know, there's a lot of variables that could affect what we would expect from, from a student yield. And multifamily is, once it gets rezoned that way, I mean, they could sit on it for years and then sell it and they could just be apartments, you know, just, you know, family-friendly apartments because it's zoned that way now. That, that rezoning's already happened. But we were trying to get a sense of what their intentions were and were never able to fully understand what they intend to build with, with that rezoning application. And consequently, it moved through the process with, despite our lack of knowledge and understanding of what they're intended to do.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I apologize. Okay, so, we don't, we don't have, it sounds like, all the information we need regarding that, so I'm gonna do a what-if, but i, if they are to develop that sooner rather than later and there are students, you know, we do derive students out of that multifamily housing, the schools in that area are already mostly at capacity, correct?
If they're not at capacity, they will be at capacity by the time that it would be constructed, just the amount of time it would take to develop 1,500 multifamily units, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, just to, to be mindful of the time, it's, it's 8:25 and we have executive session after this. I believe in agenda review. Dr. Finch, you had brought this back for a vote at the May 15th meeting. So, my question for the board is, do we have enough information or do you need more information? Is there more information you'd like to request? And then, we would move that to perhaps the May 22nd meeting for a vote. So, I guess what I'm asking, do you need more information? Do you feel the May 15th, you'd be ready to make a decision?
Ms. Frank?
Because I don't want to put something on the agenda and then have to table it or-
I, I would, if we have the time to move it to the May 22nd, I think that might give you enough time to get a meeting to see if that Esperanza, I don't know what you call it, the Esperanza clause, would be relocated into nothing land and have that taken off so it is not part of an agreement. I know that there's some other concerns that Mrs. Fisher had with Sunbelt Holdings, so I think that might give you whatever the correct amount of time to address whatever other questions we have, but certainly, I would like to make sure that you're given enough time to get in, a meeting to get rid of the, dictate of where the students would go.
I also think we have to know exactly what we're voting on. We're just voting to tell them that we're interested because we don't have an agreement, correct? We have nothing.
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, we actually have a draft of the agreement, but USA has not commented on it, so.
So, we're voting on a maybe?
We're not voting yet.
No, no.
No, I'm saying, if we, if you bring it back for a vote-
Right, it was, it was on the May 15th agenda, so.
Yeah, it would not be on the agenda, it would not be on the agenda if, if it was not agreed to, at least conceptually, by both parties.
So, then I-
Okay, so, you're only gonna bring it forward if you actually have an agreement in hand?
Correct, correct.
So, so then you already have our, what we consider, any of us that have issues, and I will do my research and get back to you right away because, like I said, the hair's standing up on the back of my neck. I have to do my research.
I, you know, I would just like to point out, though, this situation has happened before and now the schools fall. Happy Valley Charter was the only school in my neighborhood. Terramar wasn't there. And Terramar was able to get students still, so it doesn't mean because a charter is in a neighborhood that we're just going to lose every single student. That doesn't really happen.
Honestly, with bases, we'll get them back after the 100th day.
Happy, Happy Vart, Happy Valley Charter is full. And again, a lot of those kids, I drive that, that route every morning and they line up the cars for miles and they walk from that neighborhood. Again, illustrating his point, Matthew, Dr. Horn's point, that convenience trumps excellence. And, and can, and if I'm, I'm gonna be hanging out with kids that are like me, I'm gonna go to that school. So, that, they are sifting from that neighborhood. I see them walking to school every day, so there's no doubt a charter in that zone will hurt us, period.
Anything further? So, do you, do you, Mr. McGlorino, have we given you a sense of some further information that we would like to have and, and on our, and our thoughts? Do you have any questions, further questions for us?
President Frank, I appreciate the, the question. The note I took was making sure that I provide the, the additional schools, Stetson Hills and Desert Sage, and that there was some concern regarding the clause that, that the students in the interim would not attend Esperanza or another school. Desert Sage was mentioned at one point in time. I, I'll be honest, I'm the one that picked Sunset Ridge because it's the only school that won't be over capacity.
Okay.
Well, that's not true. Also, Desert Mountain potentially could be. Of the schools that they actually identified, because, quite frankly, they asked to go to Stetson Hills. That was their original request. I, I just don't see us being able to accommodate that.
What about Desert Sage? Because it's the same distance as Stetson Hills and it has a Mandarin program that might be attractive to that.
Yeah. And so, I, I made that note as well, that, and I think they, I think they would be willing to accept Desert Sage. One of the challenges with Desert Sage is it's a K-6 school, so the junior high would then end up having to go, you know, even a more considerable distance than that to get to Hillcrest if they follow suit with the school itself. But, again, this would be a short-term situation until something was, was to be built. And, and again, we have a better trigger that we authored in the agreement. You know, at the 200th home closing, we would start. So, 200 homes is gonna generate, I don't know, not even 100 kids, but it's gonna take us a year to build a school. And so, their takedown schedule is 50 homes in the first year, but then it gets ramped up, you know, once they start to get into, having to recoup the cost of the investment of, of that. So, it's a couple hundred homes a year at, at the peak. So, so, yeah, I, those are the notes I took. I'd be happy to incorporate those and having a little bit more time, again, the 18-month clock started in July, so we have time. We just were trying to, you know, trying to bring it to you when we thought USAA was gonna have commented, but they haven't so far.
Yeah.
So, it could even be later than May 22nd, is my point.
Okay. We, we would need to see a draft of the agreement. Mrs. Fisher is correct. So, we would need to see that before we could vote on it. So, then, we would need to take that off of the agenda that we reviewed this afternoon and not bring it back on May 15th, so. Anything further from my fellow board members? Then I need a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:31. So-